Welcome to the meeting of the Prime and Ploughs Committee. And thank you for attending. Seven o'clock on Tuesday, 27th of 2016. General item one, which is for absence. We received them from.
Vince, Tracy, Michael Elliott and Jasmine.
As we've already accepted, we're just at the last meeting. Are you happy to do this in bulk?
Yeah.
So have a proposal. First, I stand, seconded by Martin. All those in favour? Thank you very much. Item two, declarations of interest. Any declaration of interest? Okay. Item three, minutes of the last meeting. So some confirmed, not discussed, minutes of the last meeting.
What's that?
The first seconded, all those in favour? Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Yeah.
Right, general item four then, councillors' questions.
I'm going to go to Jimmy.
Okay, thank you. On to general item five, members' reports. Could we have a choice of either?
Actually, just mention the green flag.
I've been doing that in the class of what he wants there.
I've got the talk.
No, I was going to say, but he wants to.
No, well, I'll let you do that. Just to say that the judges, um, they respect shields. The judges have awarded respect shield too. Oakham C V Primary School and the Park School, they're a combined effort. Um, have good response if you want to know about healthy eating. Everybody should eat chocolate cake. It really is good. The exhibition will go in probably Saturday evening. They're in Valerie for a full week at no cost. All the schools have been notified, including the gentleman, Sue Lee. I've forgotten his name, he was hiding it about it. All schools have worked jolly hard putting their portfolios together. The exhibition is open all week for those who want to visit. Thank you.
Is there anything else, is anything we deserve a council? No?
No, may sign check for 250 pounds, we stick them to C V Primary School. Oh, well, this needs engraving, but I'll get Alison to sort this one out. Because it's such a big title, we'll have to use up two shields. But we do need to include the Park School because they've done some wonderful drawings.
Does it have, does it have any percentage of?
That's going to be the first assembly in September by the land. At three o'clock in the afternoon, they have an assembly, which I thought was a little new, which would be first thing in the morning. But it's three o'clock in the afternoon, something like the second of September. But don't quote that date, it's.
To be confirmed.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Joe.
Have you noticed any other members' reports?
Alison.
Alison?
Right.
Okay, what's your point, Alison?
Only to say that we received green flag. They usually send through some, a report on how we scored on the management plan and different assets. I haven't received that yet. So when I get it, I'll table it as a report. We've put the flag and perhaps we'll just perhaps range of presentation in the park. For photo shoot for paper.
Yes. I think it's essential that we do. And the sooner the better, sorry to take over the green flag thing. It is important because if you look on the websites of the green flag, it's amazing where they're situated. And we're actually going tomorrow to have a look at their park. But can I just add, a lot of work done back there, Alison, and thank you very much.
Yeah, so I agree with you. We don't, as a council, I don't think.
Sorry.
Can we not have cross talking, please?
I was just saying, can you imagine if I interrupted the clerk's talk like that?
I don't think Alison.
Can we not have any cross talking, please? Thank you.
Well, you're.
Have you finished, Alison? Thank you. Divertation by the public, most public here, so we move on to item eight. Do we have any working group, um, like an actual plan of the publicity and promotion work? Have we had anything? Okay. There's nothing noted that we want to meet up next meeting. Can I just just remind people that what we adopted, the strategic plan and the reports. The idea was with the action plans, that spending against agreed budgets. For the clerk or assistant clerk to raise orders, then it had to be shown on the action plan. So that the clerk or and deputy clerk are assurance that council have seen what the working group wants to spend budget on. As the working groups don't have delegated powers. So if the action plan is not in place and updated, then the clerk or assistant clerk should not be ordering the layers. So it is quite important. And it provides an audit trail as well, which we need. Okay?
Yeah.
General item nine then, updates on bench survey.
I will shoot you the bit then.
You can come up.
Yes, I'll have to add what we had from our contract a year ago. And one of the councillors' kids have. He's going to go to, but I'm not having a think about that. I sourced a couple of companies locally just for them to do quotes, but obviously I'm watching the board before that goes out.
Okay.
So I can just.
Good, yeah, let's go into the back end of July now. Don't get done so late, you won't.
We're going to, what's a bench survey?
It's, uh, we have a number of benches to have. Parts that the council owns. And it's to see where, make sure we know where they all are and condition that in. So we can then decide what we actually need to take. But it's just painting, repainting or any timbers in place. Or if it reaches stage where it's no longer normal, it remains that.
Well, then you're sure one.
They are provided, then, concerns by failure. Yes, Mr. Lewis.
Um, I can't speak for him, but I know Vince Howard was actually dealing with this and he made some comments to me, but as he hasn't. He's not here. Can we, I propose that that item is deferred to the next meeting. Because obviously it's got, it needs to come back. But that's my proposal, but it's deferred to the next meeting. Hopefully Vince will be here.
Yes.
So if you can't guess a report because Vince isn't here, then it does make sense to defer it. So seconded, third.
Can I just make a comment on that, did that tree you mean, um, brush, um, Malcolm Clark? I don't want to call Malcolm. And to point out that the four benches, I think it is in front of the library, the entrance to the library are not ours. They belong to local county council. The two at the rear by the peat rock do belong to us. The two, I think it's four at the entrance are looking extremely shabby.
Okay, thank you.
But it's not ours properly, except maybe.
I think, I feel there are problems also, I think as a caveat that I think we could make sure that Vince has got the time to do this. Because if you do it for another month and it still doesn't happen, we're getting to August. We're getting, they then following the work.
Um, the contractor that painted the benches previously.
Yeah.
Very much have a list of them, which would assist with the decision.
It was him that did the original bench survey for me, which I've now given to Vince.
So I think that once we get to the deferral decision voting and that stuff. Yes, that you put the caveat that Vince has made aware that this can be deferred immediately back at the next meeting. But also that if we can afford him the information that we have from the contractor that did the bench painting before, it will make his task a little easier. He has got it.
I know, I was in Austin.
Alison, you can tell us that a couple minutes.
I do apologise, Joe.
So we have a proposal from Martin's.
Exactly, why, Larry?
Yeah. Can you just read your proposal again?
It's just that this item number nine is deferred until the next Parks and Plan meeting.
I don't think that's going to be until September.
Or.
Or maybe the next town council meeting will be better August than the, it's the eighth. It's August.
We say the next.
There's only one meeting in August.
Parks and Plan show comes first.
Whichever, the next council meeting. And then if the, sorry, if there is an issue with this conflict, then we can at least consider appointing someone else to sort it.
Well, we have a proposal, seconded by them, all those in favour? Thank you very much.
The next then.
Right. General item ten, money application. The first one is 2016 of Lingo 537. And this is the one for accommodation of.
Pen Street.
Pen Street. Okay, we can't put the bench past Peter.
I would probably do a website more upfront. I mean, this is, I mean, probably all saying that this is the car most standard, typical, very good setup. Um, it provides assisted living, as they call it. So we've got a captive audience living in town. Only half the properties will have car mark space. So a lot of people will be able to walk through. As I understand it, there's pedestrian access to Tesco and through. Um, you know, I think morally it's good. Um, you know, there's kitchens, dining areas, recreation areas. Yes, there's been extensive conservation, you know, booked it up. The only slight issues might be, there's been flooding on Brook Road. I think they need to watch that because there's going to be a lot of tarmac in. Um, put calls it down through. And indeed, the railways authority have made that point. Um, it's a bit on the high side, this virgin on the conservation area, so. You know, it's a bit harsh to make that point, but that this three stories, it might stick up a little bit, but it's not. Not in that way. Perhaps the major concern is the narrow access to Penn Street, I think is one way, isn't it?
Same.
So that, although they are saying there won't be many movements or vehicles because there's only 28 parking spaces over 56 units. There's a lot of visitors, this kind of property, so you know, something to all of that. I've got one or two other things, but for the moment, whatever, so same.
I, I spoke to the cases. And it obviously is a question, I agree with what Peter has said, 56 units, as he pointed out. And the reason for the car park in 2028, he said that it's because it's going to be populated by elderly people. I think that's highly questionable these days. You look at a lot of aged people driving their car around Oakham. You know, they have 70 plus, the number of workers. So I think, I think we ought to make comment about that. Um, very, very concerned about the narrow entrance from Penn Street. Which obviously goes on to the Brook Road, which could so easily create an even bigger bottleneck. And we know the problem's there when the barriers are down. Now, once they've gone up, then there's a whole problem. So I think morally, I think ideally, I read a lot of the correspondence from people living in the area. Every one of them was for it. There was one that I read that was against it. So my feeling is that we should go for it. I think we need to show concern about the parking. And Peter's quite right, there, there is entrance from Tesco's. The narrow entrance and car parking, I think we need to make comment about that.
Okay, thank you then. Joyce?
First of all, this three story item, with it being tall, it's no different from the sidings. Because they're three story. This, this, um, land was sold to the developer from Tesco anyway. I have a problem with access because it's not only cars. It's nursing, it's doctors, it's the wheeling swanton. It's things like that. It's not so much cars as servicing the area, right? I do also have concern about the drainage. I don't mean the drainage, I mean the sewers. Because we have a problem at the end of West Road with the sewers. You know, it's okay putting these things up, it's a mass of buildings. But we've got to be careful that we're. The other side of Brook Road, you've got to turn down Penn Street. There's also going to be the allotments that are going to be built on, on Brook Road. So that area is going to be quite, quite congested. My problem is getting all the services in. Have we, I'm sure if Vince was here, he would be saying something about fire service, but there we are. That was my say.
Yes.
Yes, um, my concern has been, because I've actually visited recently, but a property which backs onto it. Which, when you consider now the extra rain we're getting. I've actually stood in a backyard where the water comes up to almost that doorstep at the moment each winter. Um, so I, I think I did put to Ratten County Council directly that that needs to be looked at. That there's a decent soak away there because once you start tarmac in more, that water is just going to keep running off and flooding. Um, as for car things, I've read that it's extra care, so I don't actually think there will be possibly many residents able to drive. But there is the issue of families visiting. I agree with Joyce, the access through Tesco's for things such as the, I'm sure they're probably going to have communal bin area large. But there is a, it is a sort of, I suppose, how you put it, sort of landlocked. And access through Tesco seems a bit odd.
Chair, chair in the front, sorry.
Exactly, I finished, you finished, yeah, finished.
It's very similar complex to Barlow Road. Although Barlow Road is very small, it has a community room. So if there's people who are being invited to give a talk. Like I was the three months ago at Barlow Road, I had no place to park. And we had to hook all the equipment from the public car park. The car parking is essential for, that would be the visitors, for the doctors and the nurses. But it's for, if they had a children's hand concert for the entertainment, you've got a problem. If you know Barlow Road, you'll know what to talk about.
Excellent.
I went to the, the opening evening that they did up at the, where is it? Well, I can't remember what it's called, but they did a presentation up, um, down in the roadway. Um, the drainage was mentioned. Um, and they are looking into putting some better soak ways in there than what they had planned. The gentleman that I spoke to also said that he was looking into the narrow road into Penn, from Penn Street. And it shouldn't cause a problem because the way they're going to do it should make it easy for cars to get into. That's what he told me, that, because I think there's a little field bit where they're going to make it a bit wider. So that it won't be just that narrow a bit, it's going to have a bit of feedaway, if you know what I mean. Um, they did say that they were having extra car, not car parking spaces, mobility parking spaces. For the old people to park their mobility scooters. But yeah, I mean, that's, that's the things that I brought up at the presentation, the stuff about the drainage and stuff.
My, my concern is not, I would echo what Stan said. But Penn, Penn Road, Penn Street is a narrow road. It has on one side resident permanent parking and there is insufficient. On the other side is a W 09 until, I believe, six in the evening. At night, there's an overflow across parts on opposite side of the yellow line side, as they can, or the, might be W line, but further down towards. One of them, it's a single yellow line, and that is parked on at night. Um, if Vince was here, I think he possibly would suggest that at night, it could be difficult, not impossible, for the works to get down Penn Road as it is. Whatever they do to the entrance, it's a one-way street. So the traffic for residents and visitors and services have got to travel from the big end of Penn Road to get in. When they come out, they'll still rise into Brook Road, which is already can bottom the car because that route. So I think, I think it have a quite a big impact on vehicle movement in both Brook Road and Penn Road. That's, that's what we're concerned with.
Yeah.
Have I made a mistake looking at the re-access from the Tesco part, is that just pedestrian?
Yes.
Yeah, that's why I made a mistake. I think at one time there was a plan for.
Check, no, it's just pedestrian.
Yes, but it is just pedestrian. There is a problem with, as I agree with the parking, everything in Penn Street is a bit.
Okay, have you raised it enough?
Just kind of come back to one or two things. I mean, I mean, Joyce makes a point, there are buildings near the area, but it's on it, and that's on it. One resident has suggested more trees to break up the landscape, and that may be, may be a point. Someone else as well is the question of lighting and British Rail Road's lighting as well, to make sure it doesn't affect train drivers. But I'm sure a company of this quality will have the latest modern lighting, which is not going to be flooding all over the place. So that would be, I mean, I generally support it because I think what it does. Um, it brings people into the town and we've got a semi-captive audience population, whatever you call it, which is going to help business. Um, you know, a bit of water, hopefully Tesco is going to enter town. You know, business will build up quite nicely. But I think, you know, my proposal would be that we support it, but with the caveat that would be mentioned.
Are you, are you making that as a proposal?
Yes.
Can you just repeat the proposal, Alison, for benefit?
I've got the concern over the parking and the narrow entrance.
Yeah. Yes, um, I mean, there's one I have missed, I don't, I think it's a minor point, but one or two people have mentioned. It could be in local stonework rather than as proposed here. But I think the majority, yes, has been said, do support it as it stands.
Do you want to put the local stonework? Do you want to add that?
Well, the, uh, a lot of brick houses that.
Yes, um, country.
All right, can we just, just a quick proposal, proposal that we threw with a caveat in principle?
We're, we're minded to support the application. We have concerns about parking, traffic flow, potential flooding, um, impact on conservation area.
Okay, go second then?
Yes.
Choice of second, are you, are you happy with that?
Yeah.
Right, all those in favour? Thank you very much, that was quite a, wasn't it? So second one, which is 2016 of Lingo 612, which obviously contains a canopy, put it over there.
There's a photo on the.
Everybody knows where it's at.
Photo, photo.
Yeah, everybody knows where it's at.
Any observations?
I don't think.
Actually, it looks actually straightforward.
I don't think that's going to be any different, um, Aldi or.
Another comment?
No.
We've got. Now, well, Martin says, all those in favour? Thank you very much. Thank you. My next one, 2016 of Lingo 652, Epic Pop Company. This is 2027, we're going to go to second.
I think there's a, there's an extractor fan and I think it's the cannon for our trip, as far as I can gather.
If they want to get it off.
I hope they put an extractor through the building instead of on the outside. That's the blow up at the top, um, which is hundred. Two window.
Which would look a lot nicer.
Yeah, so because it's an observation, it's a listed building there. So they're, they're actually trying to.
It's only the fascia, sorry, it's only the fascia that's listed planning, not whole building.
Yes. But if they just took a great big metal extractor off from the outside of the building, it'd be very obvious, so they put one through the building.
And it's still real adaptation as well.
Okay, any comments, observations? Second then, please, thank you, all those in favour? Thank you very much. And then also, 2016 of Lingo 609, Home Garden, Long Society, move this boundary fence. Move one point eight metres wide. Joyce? Observations?
Yeah. I was down there today and the fence that's there is a bit untidy. I think this will, uh, be an asset to the, the allotment people. I take it they're going to put it in. Not asking for a grant or anything.
No, no.
I think this is quite in top, tidy that, just so that you've got it on, on your log write. Tidy that area up quite nicely. Uh, when, uh, when I went down to see the gentleman, they were saying, so it's also an issue about um, people getting onto the allotments, um, who should be there. And there's been a few texts of, oh, right, it's only vegetables or root or something. But it will tidy that area up tremendously and I can approach that it would go ahead.
Not.
I, I wanted to point out to council, I agree with everything that Joyce has said, it will improve it. But there is an opportunity for the council to ask Ratten County Council to, before the new fence is put in. That they remove all the trees and shrubs that are being cut, which are damaging the footpath. Because it would be silly for the council to go along and do the work and perhaps cause damage to the fence. Once it's replaced, there's numerous trees and shops which have been self-setting along the, the boundary, which is on Ratten County Council's site. Are even still hanging. which is on Ratten County Council's site, or even still hanging cut in the chain link fence. So good opportunity to put a thing, a suggestion from members that the council were to look at that at the same time.
Could we keep that? Have we got an image of what the fence looks like now? And have we got this, within that, what is the fence being made of?
It's like chain link, down and shit.
We're chain.
Why, I like it.
Still messy.
Watching this.
They are.
It wasn't clear to me what they were replacing, and I just thought it could get damaged.
Um, I think.
That's what we can put in, is it?
I should be a lot of people, well, not a lot of.
There will be much.
Yes, the sort of thing that you see around a lot of.
Schools.
Schools. It's like the, the school of where they're present has got this.
It's opposite to the Alison's as well, at the name, isn't it? The same fancy.
Yeah, okay, thank you, it sounds like my question.
Whatever.
Yes, yes, I think, I think it will be much, so the current situation. It's a fairly good quality fence. I don't know whether council's book suggestion in this pursuit, it's not really about the planning issue, but it may be on the side that we send a separate letter or something.
Where it may be given up, given up in the society, maybe given up themselves.
Possible.
Whatever, I, I might wouldn't do any harm if I, if I move it. That's coffee, it's, it's, you agree with that?
It's not my argument. There is a proposal on item, so I seconded.
Right, so let's just go back to, so who proposed, sorry, we have, first proposed, Stan has seconded. All those in favour? Amy and Alice, thank you very much. And all the IP then, and then Alison emails, can council copy it to the Lotton Society when they wish to look at removal of data.
We're supporting their attempts, aren't we? And we're supporting.
They're not ours, are they?
I think it is. I get confused. They're not ours, are they?
They're not mine.
So, maybe it's supposed, that's, I think, what I'm saying.
Is it, is it damaged?